Has everybody that is in the council chambers had a chance to sign in? If not, if you could please. I'm gonna call the insurance, finance, and personal party meetings to order. Real call.
Griffin here.
Cummings here.
All right, this is public safety.
Yeah, public, yeah. I was gonna correct you, but I was like, we're going with it.
I'm gonna call the public safety, now committee meeting to order. Real call.
Griffin here.
Cummings here.
Cummings here. For the meeting minutes from September 5th.
Cummings will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 6th.
Griffin, second.
Have a motion from Cummings in the second paper to approve the meeting minutes from September 5th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. Public comment, is anyone here to comment on that? That is not on the agenda. Hearing and seeing some, we're gonna go straight into unfinished business. Now, follow up on the February 3rd, three-hour parking pass. Think we need a motion to approve that. We're gonna do that for an annual. Recommend the council approval of that for the annual, for an annual pass.
Cummings will make that motion to approve the three-hour parking pass.
You recommend the council?
Yes, I recommend the council.
Question. Is this like a yearly thing then?
It'll be annual, yep.
Okay, thank you. Last time we didn't send it to council for the three hours?
That was just on my public sa- or public safety, correct?
But I did not give it on council for tonight.
That's fine.
I still make that motion?
Griffin, second.
Have a motion from Cummings, second by Griffin, to recommend the council approval of the three-hour parking pass. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. The Blight Report.
Everything on there, um, that was previous, uh, previous one, they've been contacted and they're in some type of transition. As far as they've been taken care of or they've been contacted anymore.
Do we have the most updated list? I didn't see it.
Isn't it back in here?
Previous.
That one's the most updated? Do we need a motion?
No, we're just, it's just information. New business, snowmobile trail. Is Richard?
He's over there.
The trail is in the packet. Speaking with the club president, it has not changed from last year.
Were you having problems with it last year?
We didn't have any problems with things from last year.
There's an open one with you, so I'm not.
I have a question about the trail. Will they be putting the barricades up on the south side of the driveway? I mean, last year, it was kinda late they had on that. To push the snowmobiles up onto the gravel shoulder right before that driveway.
You don't talk to the club on that, if they do all that.
I don't, I understand the question.
They're gonna put the barricades up? They, he's just saying that they did it later.
Yeah, last year, it happened really late. I had to come to a second council meeting to ask, because they said they were gonna do it the same as previous years. But then they forgot to put those barricades up.
Yes, both of them.
Okay.
Any other questions concerning the trail? And whether issues?
Cummings will make a motion to approve the snowmobile trail for 2024 and 2025.
Recommend approval to the council?
And I recommend approval to go to council.
Griffin, second.
Have a motion from Cummings to recommend approval of the snowmobile trail 2024, 2025 to council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carried. Have a special event application for this spectacular October 26th event. This looks like, from reading through this, is the same as you've done in this year's, do you?
Yes, it is.
Are there any changes to the application?
Not at all, no.
This is for October 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.?
Yes, sir.
And you're asking for the south side of East and West Madison Street? Between the bridges to be, no parking?
Yes. I'm going it all off, yeah.
Uh, North Monroe Street and South Monroe Street. I know you want the dead end, the Coliseum.
Yes.
How about a North and South Monroe Street? I know you wanted that, which side? Did you want both sides?
Both sides, yes.
Both sides of North Monroe Street?
Yeah, about 43 vendors right now.
Forty-three? Wow, that's great. And you're gonna make arrangements with the park to get Perkins Park?
Cummings will make that motion to send to council, recommend to send to council for the event this spectacular, October 26th, 2024.
Griffin, second.
Have a motion from Cummings, second by Griffin, to recommend the council approval of the spectacular event on October 26th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? The beer cheese and wine crawl from November 16th. This is a new event, correct? This is be the same as the wine walk?
Similar to the wine walk, yes. I mean, the exact platform as it, as the wine walk was, except for it'll be a, there'll be some different stops and, you know, I think we've got about ten stops right now, I don't wanna get too many more than that.
Adding cheese, fantastic idea.
Yeah, Beth's gonna, Beth, she's gonna work on a multitude of different kinds and all have the, all run right over the restaurant, make a bunch of different stuff for, for, yeah.
So your restaurant's gonna be open?
Hmm?
Your restaurant's gonna be open?
Cummings will make the recommendation to council for the event beer cheese and wine crawl on November 16th.
Griffin, second.
Have a motion from Cummings, second by Griffin, to recommend the council approval of the beer wine cheese crawl for November 16th, 2024. I have one question. You're gonna be using Veterans Park again, correct?
Yes.
Are you looking for any streets or, uh, for any parking?
Not at all. My question is, I mean, how long, how long do you want to give me to get you a list of bartenders and a list of stops?
Chief?
Yes.
How long?
Yes.
When? How soon do you want it?
I mean, you want it by the first of November?
Just before the month.
Well, I'll, I'll get a list of bartenders and everything, but, like, I'll just say 11:01, that way.
Maybe before is even enough.
I know, but if I got any cleanup to do, then I can.
And I see you got your application for the temporary Class B.
Yeah, I just had it.
Just do that with Jane, that doesn't have to go through council, correct?
No, I didn't know, I just had it set up like the wine walk.
Okay. Have a motion from Cummings, second by Griffin, recommend council approval of the event, the beer cheese and wine crawl for November 16th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Cummings, uh, excuse me, Cummings, motion carried. Chickens.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Will you come up to speak if you could just state your name and?
I'm Daryl North, water resident for about eight years now, joined by my family and I've used quite a few folks in here that are here to support the raising of backyard chickens. I have together, uh, put together a school, always here. And forgive me for not making it up.
That's all right. I'll, I'll.
So I know that I'll be speaking tonight and then shortly after, I'd like for my son to have a few words. But, uh, my name is Daryl North and I'm here to present my case for admitting city ordinances to allow the raising of chickens in a residentially zoned district, or allowing what are coming called backyard chickens. First, I wanna talk about some benefits. Backyard chickens offer fresh, healthier eggs. They support sustainability by reducing household waste. They consume food scraps and contribute to composting, which enriches our soil and supports urban gardening. Chickens are natural pest controllers to reducing the need for harmful pesticides. Uh, anybody can look at locally sourced eggs and, uh, store bought eggs and see the quality. Not only does it support sustainability, raising chickens provides a path to greater self-sufficiency, helping families secure a sustainable source. The rising crisis of eggs has been recently discussed across major community outlets. I should not have to mention how important self-sufficiency is during times of economic uncertainty. Backyard chickens also offer educational opportunities for children and adults alike to learn about responsibility and animal welfare. Concerns about noise, odors, and predators have reasonable solutions. Hens, unlike roosters, are quiet and a rule banning roosters ensures that there are no disruptive crowing. Hens are less noisy than everyday sounds we encounter such as lawn doors, barking dogs, and snow blowers. As for odor, well-maintained coops produce minimal smell, far less than the fertilizers used on nearby fields. Additionally, secure coops prevent predators from being attracted to an area. These are manageable issues and in fact, backyard chickens have been successfully integrated into communities by backyard procrastination. Lastly, public support. In less than a month, we've collected over 200 signatures from our community and by far the ma- the vast majority of the folks that we approached were in support of raising backyard chickens. Communities like ours thrive when we embrace urban agriculture and self-sustaining practices. This change isn't just about chickens, it's about fostering a healthier, more resilient community. In closing, by allowing backyard chickens, we promote sustainability, food security, and community engagement. All while maintaining respect for our neighbors through thoughtful regulation. I urge you to trust our residents and to support the city should it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to talk?
Hi everyone, my name is Lucas.
Hello.
I am nine years old.
Just a second.
He's talking.
This is your man over here who's talking.
That's okay.
Sorry?
That's all right, go ahead.
Go ahead, buddy, you're true.
You could see he was a little.
Again, my name is, hi everyone, my name is Lucas, I am nine years old. I'm here today because I love chickens. I know some people think they cause problems, but I promise, when it's just a few chickens in your backyard, they really don't. Some people worry about noise, but the truth is, only roosters are loud and we don't want roosters. Hens, the ones that, that lay eggs are super quiet. I spend a lot of time with my chickens and I can tell you they're quieter than barking dogs. People also think chickens smell bad, but honestly, the coop almost smells. So, uh, if you stick your head in it, I don't know why anyone would do that. So unless you're planning on sticking your head in your neighbor's coop, you won't smell a thing. Now, predators, everyone says they'll come at, if there, there are chickens. But actually, uh, things like garbage cans and food, what, left are attracting more animals than chickens. Those wandering around are more of a problem than a few chickens in a safe coop. Here's the cool part, if your neighbor has chickens, you'll probably get fewer bugs in your yard. Chickens love to eat mosquitoes, ticks, and fleas. So if you hate getting bitten, you'll love, uh, having chickens around. And one more thing, you might even get fresh eggs. People with chickens are always excited to share. Wouldn't it be great to have delicious eggs from your neighbor? So please, don't be against us having backyard chickens, you will benefit too. And we promise we will make a good care of them, thank you.
Doc Vocer, 123 Harrison Street.
I'm sure I can give you the name.
Doc, D-O-C, as in like the seven dwarfs. Vocer, V-O-E, L-K-E-R.
Yes.
123 Harrison Street. Um, the one thing I wanted to add was that Madison has had chickens for a long time, like years. And their limitation was four chickens, has to be in a roost. Um, I believe if the chickens have chicks, they can come inside until they're full grown and then you have to decide what you wanna do with them. Because they're limited to four, right? And that's so that we don't have a big old monstrosity of chickens everywhere. But, um, I just wanted to make sure that when we, when or if we get to that point, um, the only con I could come back with is safety. If one of the chickens gets out and darts across the road and a vehicle tries to avoid it, it may end up hitting somebody or wrecking the vehicle, that's the only negative I could see. And so, if we would actually do that, we would, I would request that we have, uh, an ordinance or a citation to be able to give warnings and hey, use as far as you gotta keep your coop better or make sure that the dimensions of whatever we end up putting the chickens in is appropriate. Um, I'm not sure what you wanted to go for as far as limitations, but four chickens will feed a family for, for quite a bit. I agree with him, the dung is very good fertilizer. I'm the guy with the wallaby. I produce good stuff with wallaby poop. Um, I'm probably sure would actually grow a little bit more with some, um, some, uh, chicken poop. Uh, other than that, I would agree, zero roosters and, um, open to any questions. My two and a half cents.
Anybody else?
Yeah, my name's Gunther Knudsen. Um, I just wanna hand this out, this is just a list of all the other local municipalities that allow chickens in our area. As you can see, it is, I, and I didn't even look at all this, this, a majority of the larger ones, um, you know, I didn't look into every single small township, but, you know, these backyard chickens becoming more and more popular and, you know, that concern that, uh, that just got pointed out, you know, most coops are enclosed and if chickens are allowed out of them, they usually, their ordinance written will keep them in fenced in areas with at least six-foot high fences and you can also put chicken wings to, make sure they don't get over those fences as well, so, you know, um, but most places, uh, at least in Madison, I don't think they have to be in the coop. And, you know, it's just in my opinion of all, especially Madison being a huge city, especially with smaller properties, if they can do it safely and, uh, you know, in a healthy manner, you know, I can't want to, so, thank you.
Anyone else who wish to speak on the issue?
So I guess I have a couple of questions, um, can I ask more questions?
You can ask questions.
Um, I guess in your presentation, you said that, um, the coops are good because they will be well maintained. What if they're not? And that's like the biggest concern is like, when they're not well maintained, then whose problem is it? Is it the neighbors and they have to call the city and then they get the complaints, so that gets trimmed down? So how can we, how do we know how to manage that?
Sure.
Because not everybody is gonna maintain a coop, probably to your neighbors.
If they want healthy chickens, they will.
Right, it's of, it's of my opinion, you know, I have friends that raise chickens in Madison, that most people that end up getting, I mean, it's a pretty big initial investment to get into this, so I think you have to have a little motivation to, you wanna get these and wanna take care of them. Um, so I think most owners, at least from my point of view, um, end up wanting to keep them healthy and keep that coop clean. Um, I think what other communities do is their ordinances are written, it falls under nuisances, so if smell becomes an issue or chickens are getting loose, they become a nuisance, that same as like a dog getting loose. Um, so, I guess in that situation, you know, I think a police officer would have to take care of that. Um, another solution could be, you know, I would, I would be willing to volunteer my time if there are nuisance complaints to go investigate that and I don't know what power the city could give me as, as far as reporting back or recommending citations as far as that goes, but I would be willing to do that on a volunteering basis, just so that we could get chickens in our community, because I am very passionate about this, so. I hope that answers your question.
So anyone else volunteer time to do that as well?
And I as well can do that.
I got kids.
Um, I guess I have another question, if we allow the chickens, does that mean we have to allow all of these animals? Goats, ducks, turkeys?
No, we're just looking for.
This is just for chickens.
Just for chickens, but if, what I have investigated is, once you open it up to chickens, then it kind of opens the door to a large variety of more animals.
Like wallabies.
I was thinking more like goats, which I don't have any problem with goats, but I don't want goat in my backyard. Um, and so when I did look it up, that was, one of the biggest complaints was that the city or cities opened it up and then it was a down role spiral.
On your former question, man? I, I'm not speaking for everybody, but I really don't want to see civilians, police, and people. That's definitely not.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would definitely have to be a law stop, and it's just like he was referring to, it's a leash law for the dogs or you have a loose dog and you're trying to find it, that type of thing, I think that would be a pretty easy, hey, come get your chicken. And of course, the only other thing that might possibly come up is the death of a chicken that got hit. Um, what would the, the city want to use as, um, retro, uh, what's it called?
Restitution.
Restitution? Or would that be at the fault of the owner?
No ordinance that I read.
Anything that falls in the road within the road right away becomes the homeowner's responsibility. So if your dog, cat, chicken, or other animal gets loose and is in the road, it's the homeowner's responsibility.
Yep, and that's exactly why I wanted to bring up the point. We already have statutes and citations and everything that covers this, you just gotta put the word chicken on it.
Do you mind checking with their insurance company to see what they say?
And the ordinance, I just have, the ordinance that we proposed in the packets, they only specify two chickens, so we, we are put it, uh, no, that no other animals. We only fighting for chickens' rights and, and I can vouch for it, we tried it for six months until police showed up and told us to get rid of them, which we did. And they were really, not really, they, they were very clean. As soon as sun was going down, they went in a coop, they came out with the sun. They don't, they're not, uh, noise, noisy per se, they will squawk for a little bit, but that's when they lay out, just to let you know that they have a surprise for you. So.
What about when, uh, I don't know much about chicken and, you know, their life, so what about what happens when they get old?
There's so many other farms that, um, there's a great.
You don't slaughter them at your house?
No, that's another thing.
Common among ordinances, there's no.
I have no idea, I'm just asking, I wanna make sure to ask because I, in some prairie, they had, never mind, another day.
Uh, I'll just to speak, it's common, no slaughtering on your property and also, it's pretty common, no resale of any byproducts, whether that be meat or eggs, so that people don't try to start up a small business on their, on their property, you know, that's, those are pretty common with ordinances. And as far as your slippery slope argument, again, we're just here for chickens. Um, I don't know how common it is for communities to push more aggressively for like goats and pigs and whatnot, so I, I'm curious, I'm gonna look into that after this meeting. But what I can tell you today is, we are not interested in that and I, we've been interested, my wife and I have been interested in chickens since we moved here, uh, three years ago and, um, we've never wanted anything beyond that, so, thanks.
And one more thing, just, we had over 200 signature and just because we had 200 signatures doesn't mean everybody on that side, sign a sheet wants to have a chicken, they just don't mind if somebody else have a chicken. So there's only a small group of us and who, there, there's so many supporting people who came in just because they know, but they don't really wanna have it.
I just wanna say, we live right by them and I would not have even known that they had chickens if our sons weren't friends and we weren't friends. I would have had no idea, like I had no, I, I never heard, I never saw, I had no idea, so I mean, they, I, I wouldn't have known.
Is the ordinance in here what, the ordinance you're recommending that you pass?
Sure, I can speak to that. So that, those ordinances are just, um, I base those off other local municipalities around our area, so Lake Mills, Madison. Yeah, Madison, so Madison, just so everyone's, Madison did increase it to eight, I just put eight on there, not expecting to get eight, but, you know, I love chickens, I wanna have as many as I can, so, um, but yeah, those local ordinances are based off of just other local municipalities and I kind of synthesized them and it's something I thought was appropriate and of course, you know, it's gonna be up to city council to determine exactly what those ordinances are, I just was laying some groundwork, some ideas of what they could be, so.
I could add one more thing, sorry, about releasing chicken and going away. I noticed with my, just my, our case, that we clipped our chicken wings and we had, um, privacy fence and they never went over the fence, not even tried, because they had a plenty of room next to their coop and they just stayed around that. So, and you can even tell on the farms, the chickens, when they roam around, they don't, they will not go too far from the coop, just in case, so they can hide. So that's another thing that it shouldn't be a problem if somebody keeping it on the backyard and give them enough space.
Okay.
I guess that my question is, is this gonna be something that like you monitor as to where they can put their chicken coops? Because otherwise I feel like this is gonna spill up on the Blight Report and, you know, we make people move their campers because it's an eyesore. I mean, you're gonna have to have a different place that is not considered an eyesore?
Uh, so I don't know as far as eyesores, but usually within ordinances, they specify it needs to be X amount of feet from the main dwelling, it needs to be X amount of feet from the property line, some say it has to be in the back of the house, so, you know, regulations can be written in such a way that, you know, if you're concerned about eyesores or if the city is concerned about eyesores, you know, there's solutions to that.
Okay, uh, personally, I'm against chickens, backyard chickens. Uh, I think farm animals are farm animals. We have agricultural zones where chickens are allowed to be raised. Some of my reasons for not wanting chickens in the community is I have on my personal cameras at home. We have raccoons already. In Topping with other, we've, we've got raccoons, we've got fox, we have, uh, possum. These are all things that I've seen. Chickens from Topping with other communities that have passed chicken ordinances. I've seen an increase in coyotes. I haven't seen too many coyotes in town, but they're on the edge of town. You can hear them singing just about every night. Do I need those in town? The answer's probably no. Do I wanna draw them into town? The answer is no. I had an interesting conversation with the person that does the enforcement for the city middle. person that does the enforcement for the city of Middleton. Cause Middleton, two years ago, just went through in ordinance and, uh, they had many problems at the beginning. But he said downtown Middleton, which is not a small community, saw an increase in, uh, the predators, the coyotes, the fox, the hawks. We're a small rural community. You don't have to go more than a mile from here in any one direction than you are in the country. Those predators are out there and we need to draw them into town now. I don't think so. We have domestic animals in town that these predators can and will go after. They're brought into town and they have, uh, the opportunities. It's interesting, the number of communities that have gone to chicken ordinances. It's also interesting with communities that have not. Uh, get a checkup on the Fox Valley. Out of 12 communities, only six have got chicken ordinances. You go over towards Waukesha, uh, they have chicken ordinance. You go to the next community, they don't. So as many places they can come up with that have chicken ordinances, you can probably come up with close to an equal number that haven't allowed chickens into the communities for various reasons. We've got a community that's not that far to the north, this Beaver Down, that several years ago they did go to chickens and it was only one or two years later, they rescinded that ordinance.
Why?
I'm not sure why. They, they rescinded the or, I always told you rescinded the ordinance, like basketball. And then rescinded it one or two years later. Now we've got into the, the reasons why. Noise, depends on the type of chicken. So there is noise with chickens. Uh, yeah.
There is a noise, but it's usually in the daytime when you have dogs outside barking, howling, the same thing like the sirens of police cars or anything. The chicken goes, as soon as the sun goes down, it's not even setting down, they already in a coop. They scared of predator or they're, they hiding. They want to be locked for the night and they don't come out until the sun comes down. The predators, I'm sorry, but we cutting out so many trees. We pushing out some prairie growing so much, cutting out so many lands, pushing out everything out. Predator is going to be coming outside no matter what. They're going to be looking like just we said, trash. They're going to be attracted to that. How, how clean we are. So it's, it's, you can state your fact and we can state our fact, how we see it.
I understand that, okay? The other thing I'm looking at is avian flu, which has not been a problem immediately. Jefferson County just killed, uh, in 22.
Sure, but that's usually comes up when you have a huge amount of chicken and you, you don't really.
I'd love you to talk, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. 2022, they killed a whole flock. 2015, Jefferson County again killed a whole flock because of avian flu. We are on the migratory path of birds and those bring avian flu with them through the droppings. It's interesting that in 2022, Jefferson County had the flock. There was also the flock in Barron County, Hope County, non-commercial flocks. Backyard chickens were in Rock County, Racine County, Columbia County in 2022. So avian flu is a real thing. There is currently, this is the report from September 27th of this year. On avian flu. And then we really did, the chief printed it out for me. There's been a huge increase, unless it's in the nation, not just one, that Jefferson County or Wisconsin. An increase in the incidences of avian flu. So that's a concern. If we get avian flu in backyard chickens, and I understand we only require it to be registered with the state, that could eliminate all the flocks here. It could affect commercial flocks. So that's a concern.
I'd like to know if the other council members have an opinion.
They're going to get a chance to talk.
Okay, that would be nice.
Everybody gets a chance to talk, Jenny.
Good, good.
Uh, salmonella, which is from raw eggs. CDC, it's interesting. We're talking about having our children deal with the chickens. The salmonella from raw eggs and chickens comes from handling of the chickens and handling of raw eggs. And it's predominantly in those under the age of five that are, um, the most likely to get sick from. Now, I understand parents are going to be out there with their children. And they're hopefully around the, the chickens. But they're not going to be there all the time, but hopefully they're washing their hands and making sure their hands be taken care of. As far as cleaning this up, the coops. And that is a really because it has to do with smell, has to do with getting in love with your neighbors. Walk McCain away and show me the dog droppings. People walking their dogs. So hopefully people care about their dogs as much as you care about the chickens. But that doesn't stop them from letting them defecate anywhere they want. We've got that problem. So when you tell me you're going to take care of them, I go to the dogs and say, dog owners and I understand the intent is great. I also know that it doesn't always happen as it was intended. So I'm not sure I want to start bringing something new that is going to bring predators into the city. That's my opinion. Okay? Thank you.
Sir?
Yes?
Can I have a report directly with you on your opinions?
You'll have an opportunity later, okay?
Mm-hmm. That'd be great. Not how you do it.
Has anybody out there cleaned a chicken coop?
We have.
Okay. I lived in, raised in Jefferson and I helped my grandpa on the farm. That's got to be the worst job there is.
That was more than four chickens.
And you know, 25 of you here that want chickens, what do we do with the other 3,800 people who maybe don't want chickens?
We already contacted the waste company and they said they will take the chicken waste.
Yeah.
As well.
It could be composted.
That's another idea if anybody wants it, or maybe city would like to start, uh, composting. I mean, that, that could be sold to everybody probably over here have a yard and garden that they would definitely probably want to get a compost from a city than go to some prairie or Madison to buy.
Is it possible we could leave this up to a referendum, um, and allow the city to decide? Or at least get your opinion from everybody that votes, at least? Yeah. I mean, you're worried about the 3,800 people that we didn't get.
Well, we're just going to try to please everybody. You can't.
So if you're looking for a, a general audience opinion of chickens, then that might be a possibility. I'm just telling that off there.
And again, like we said, we've got it on all 200 signatures. We the only one probably who would, and half of it, probably not everybody who wants a chicken over here would want five chicken in a yard. So it's not like we're going to have 20. We take care of it. We belong to a, a website on Facebook that is very knowledgeable. A lot of people, if something happened to the chickens, they right away responding, communicating. So we probably would be better, um, idea if any sickness would happen and spreading to stop than like a big farm that is have thousands of chicken and then it's just too late when sickness is in the huge flock.
Sure. Yes?
I was wondering, based on his comment too, um, would this want to be sent to the planning commission to have a public hearing? Cause that would get the people in. Cause right now I've had a couple of people just text me going, I heard there's chickens. I thought it was on council and it's not. So unfortunately a lot of people don't pay attention to the other committees, you know?
And we've been doing our best to reach out, sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. But not everybody necessarily knew about it and we have a new reporter in the paper. So sometimes she doesn't get stuff out there right away. So, I mean, I, I, referendum is a whole different thing versus just having a public hearing and have everybody speak and then have a meeting set just for that. Because it would probably have to go to the planning commission anyway, because this is a whole ordinance change, which would be worked out between all the committees anyway. And there's, there's a variety of things that were in the packet from other municipalities to the county for and different definitions and locations and all of that stuff. So it isn't just something that you can solve in 35 minutes. So there would definitely have to be more of a conversation. So I just, your meeting, just want to throw that out there. I think that's a really good idea to get more of the community involved. Cause I thought it was on council and it's not. So that's fine. And I'm not, um, I'm not for it and I'm not against it. I'm in the middle. And so it's hard for me to sit up here and say no, because I know you guys are very passionate about it. So I obviously take note to that. Um, I have done research, my own research to figure it out. Um, but I wouldn't successfully be able to say yes or no tonight. Like I just, I'm not comfortable. So I would have to sing because I don't want them in my backyard, but I understand other people do. So I would, I would like to see more of the planning commission meeting. And it's fine. It could be a city council too. It's your recommendation of where you want to put it. I think more of the community, um, I know you guys got.
We could send it to city council.
I, and I, and I know they got 200 signatures and so I understand all that. So that's, um, I also pay attention to that, but the 3,800 people, maybe having more voices. Because if we open it up and it's only a couple of people that have chickens, then what if it grows? And like, my true concerns is the, the clean coops, to be honest, like I don't want to put any more work on you guys. You guys are already busy enough. So.
Yeah, it's a problem. Who would we have?
Exactly. Who is to maintain it and who's to?
The street department or police department.
Yeah.
And speaking with Chad, uh, it doesn't need the extra work.
Right.
And these other communities that have building inspectors and, uh, which we are having problems with, yes?
Uh, so during my research, uh, the town of Oracon is, uh, similarly sized, uh, to Waterloo. They have a population of about 3,700 people.
Sure.
And, uh, they have an ordinance for the raising of backyard chickens as well. And so maybe, uh, we could look to them as kind of a model and perhaps maybe reach out to them to get more information about how they've dealt with, you know, any kind of issues. See if we can, uh, figure out what sorts of, uh, problems they've encountered since allowing it and, uh.
And who has maintained it if like the coops are not.
Sure.
Those are, let's see, all the questions that I would want to know. I don't think this should go to council yet. I think it should go to the planning commission and then have a, and then council. Cause I, I think if we brought it to council, it would probably get turned down. So if we want to really get voices and really hear how everyone feels, maybe we do that. There's a process to go through public hearings and stuff too, that in this particular case, everyone would get the notice so that people.
I agree very much against ate chickens. Most of the ordinances I read are for. Most of the ordinances I read do not allow free ranging.
What does that mean? I think I was going to say the same thing. Sorry.
That means they're all outside of the coop.
You got to tell me. Okay. I thought you said. I know. I was like, what do you mean? Okay.
They have to stay in the coop.
I think there is a difference between, well, I think free range, I think a non-fenced area. Some, some do just allow them in just a six foot fenced in area. Some do just allow just in the coop. So I just want to make that distinction.
Most of their friends, I'm not going to say most, a number of their friends say they have to stay in the coop.
Okay.
Or in their.
I, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to make it clear we're not, we don't want them open.
The coop is, is a, it's a building.
I, I, I know. That, that sounds very nice.
It is.
That's what it is. I mean, it's a backyard.
Don't you want to get, have them have a little fresh air? I don't know. Okay.
They got pressure.
I, I know, but it's like, yeah.
Shut standard closure.
They won't eat those pests if they're stuck in the coop.
What?
They won't eat those pests if they're stuck in the coop all the time. So.
Okay. So.
We've not also ran the runs under his backyard, entire backyard.
As long as they're in a fenced area, I mean, I'm for that. But that's just my opinion.
Defense in areas, no. Hundred square feet, just 10 by 10. That's not a problem.
The technical term that they use is the coop is the building and then the run is the fenced in area.
Right.
They've got an area to run in.
Yeah. And the run is usually covering.
Run is usually.
Okay. So we want to.
I don't get to speak until I'm told to speak.
That's correct. Got to wait. Yes.
So would you recommend then, would you be okay with doing the planning commission?
If we want to, depending on what the committee wants to do.
I think that's a good idea. That's me.
You have something you want to add?
Sure. I just wanted to dispel some of the rumors. Um, avian flu affects other avians. It's mostly from the Canadian geese. It is very rare. The N7H5 flu, there's been probably only one or two cases per year. You, you have a better chance of catching the regular flu and dying from it.
I'm not talking about people. I'm talking about birds.
Yeah. And to get rid of them, you can compost them. And I actually was on the Surf P, the chemical mercy response program in 2015 when we had to take care of that flock. And that's all we had to do. Light them all up, wash it all down, destroy 20,000 chickens.
Destroyed all the chickens.
Yep. And we just took it to a dump site, cleaned all the dump trucks and, I mean, how hard would that be? Uh, not too hard. And, uh, as far as salmonella goes, you can get that from eggs in the store. All they are is handled to make sure that they don't have a little chick in there.
That's correct.
Yep. So I mean, salmonella can come from a whole bunch of different places that really shouldn't be like chicken.
What gets me though is the fact that it's those under five.
It's what?
Those kids.
Age.
Kids ages under five that are the most susceptible to the salmonella.
Yep. That's always the kids.
These are the kids that are going to be out in the coops. From what you're telling me, these are the, going to be the people out there collecting the chickens. These are the ones that are going to be out there with the chickens.
Well, I think you're making some stretches there because of course anything to do with an animal is the adult's responsibility regardless of what.
I fully agree with you. An adult's responsibility to make your dogs, you're going to get up after and it's not happening.
I think a dog in the city of Waterloo is 10,000 times more likely to cause damage than a chicken. As far as humans and property and disturbance. And I believe PETA would require us to have at least a run. And I don't know how big that would be, but I bet you on the PETA website, it tells you one chicken equals this much, four equals that.
Oh, I fully agree with you. You could have a coop and a run.
Yep.
I'm just not talking about free ranging.
Sure.
And I've been free ranging.
And, uh, coons and opossums, those are not predators. They're garbage eaters. Just like your bear. Your bear doesn't come here to kill us. They come to get your garbage. So as far as predators are concerned, we used to have a fox family that lived right on, uh, Madison and Harrison Street. Yep. It's gone now, but bringing chickens back is going to pull that family back?
Most of the rabbits are going to move.
As they were saying, as the population grows and we take over their climates, they come to ours.
Okay. Thank you.
Talk to them.
Okay. So I will make a motion to, you said Jenny, to take it to planning commission. Whatever you want for planning or council, but it should have a public hearing. Yeah, that's what I think. I will make a motion to send to planning commission to have a public hearing.
One second then.
Yeah, the motion for government's submitted by Griffin to forward this to the planning commission. Commission. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With or without recommendations? Without recommendation, just period, which is fine.
I think it's going without recommendation.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, no one here is, everybody here is saying no.
Okay.
If we send it to recommendations, can be a recommendation for her. I mean, Sarah, I said hers would be, had to approve it right now.
So the next...
Yeah, I just said I would, I would abstain. Actually, I wouldn't.
Okay, you would abstain, so.
That's fine, you can finish your...
You want to do it with or without a recommendation?
Without.
No.
Without a recommendation.
The next Planning Commission meeting would be October 22nd, providing I can have a list down. And that'll give us a couple more weeks to get some more information. Because Horicon wasn't in this packet, but we do have some other stuff. So there's a lot of repetitive stuff, so we can try and narrow it down to have something ready to be posted. And go out to everybody.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much, Griffins, for coming. Appreciate you.
Thank you for listening.
It's nice to have people come to this.
We get lonely.
We sit so many times.
National Legion Certificate of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, for Liberty and Justice for All.
For All.
Austin Cool here.
Earl Cool here.
Griffin here.
Thomas here.
Wade here.
Hi, Liam.
There is leave for Parents Night.
All.
And I know.
Right.
All right, meeting minutes approval of September 19th. Additional directions.
Charles Cool, next motion to approve the minutes from September 19th.
Wired will second.
Motion by Charles Cool, second by Wired to approve the minutes from September 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Citizen input. Anybody have any, Ms. Wilson, hang up. All right, I do have one from, what?
Are we doing input on last month's meeting?
You can do input on anything that's not on the agenda, because then you have to wait till we get to that agenda item, you can talk then.
Not a problem. I do have a couple of things that aren't on the agenda.
Sure, state your names, so people all know.
Yep, always. Brent Dot Walker, at 133 Harrison Street. And I moved here from Maryland, the State of the United States Army, to take care of the Wisconsin National Guard. And so I've been here since 2007. And during that time, where I live, the, the roads are really bad. And Chad is out there every fall rolling some gravel and, you know, blacktopping there, but it isn't blacktopped, if you say, if you would. And I know we don't have a heavy vibrator to vibrate it in and stuff, so it typically comes out every fall, or over the winter. And so I, after I parked in the pristine parking lot for this facility, I came to wonder why that happened in lieu of somewhere else. And I'm sure that was approved some, at a different time. The only other thing I have is, I believe Charter pays us to have a monopoly in the survey on our budget.
It has nothing to do with our budget. We, we don't get anything in the budget.
Do we pay him to put two channels on the TV?
It's through the cable board, that's through the cable board.
I understand that.
Different body.
But I'm just throwing that out there, that I'm pretty sure the last time I looked at the budget, they pay us and we pay them exactly the same amount. Whereas I think a high school kid could do that job and still be able to get it out to the people.
You, you're talking about the cables not getting information out to the people? I'm confused by comments.
Okay. In your, your budget, the last time I looked, Charter Cable says, hey, if you just let us here in Charter take care of everything, no TDS, no whatever, we will pay you $80,000. And later on in the budget, we pay them $40,000 for each channel. So it's a wash, right? However, anybody can do that job. I'm not saying we could put it on a TV, but we can do like internet and stuff like that. And I think that's a really bad use of our tax dollar money.
That's not tax dollars at all.
Oh.
There's no tax dollars in the cable.
Of course it isn't, because it's a wash. You pay him, he pays you.
If you would like to go to a cable board meeting and have this discussion, I would highly recommend you call Laura Cottin. She's in charge of it.
But this is the council. Then it goes to the, me, them.
Well, this is not an agenda item, so I'm just correcting you that it's no tax dollars going towards that. And that parking lot was sinking, so I have a problem with, you know, safety. And road projects are generally $2 million. So we do have a road project list that's on our website. I encourage you to look at it. Public Works just happened tonight at 6:30. And budgets are going on. I encourage you to come and listen in on our budgets. We get very lonely there too.
I bet.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so then I did get an email from Don, who could not be here tonight. And so he asked me to read this during Citizen Input. "I am unable to make the meeting for Citizen Input, if you're able to state this online behalf, so I can, so I can get it into the public record. Thanks to the Public Works for painting the curbs by the hydrants on the McCaw Way side streets." He didn't say love Don, but I'm just saying love Don. Okay, there you go. That's done. All right, meeting summary since last meeting, finance, Tim?
Can I do a couple of these at the same time?
Absolutely. Name which one, A, B, C, nine, 10, what that, what are they?
I'd be A and E.
A and E, you got it.
Both are finance, insurance and personnel. The one on the 23rd was a budget meeting with the fire department. The finance meeting on the 25th was a special budget meeting with City Hall, and we discussed debt.
And we did have one on Monday. I did not get it in here, because I did that after the packet.
And that was a closed session meeting.
And you can put that up in the next one, I guess.
Okay.
Sorry, that's not, no problem. All right, thank you. Fire Department, Wes.
Okay, first Monday was September 2nd, which was a holiday. We did not do our operators training that night due to the holiday. September 9th, we had our EMS training, which was our quarterly training with our medical director. We did CPR, airway suctioning, airway management, and we worked with the CPAP slash BiPAP, knowing the death benefits between the two. One of the things we can do right now is we can do CPAP and now they're, hopefully with our new protocols, we are gonna be able to do BiPAP as well. A lot of the hospitals, when we get them there and have them on CPAP, they actually switch them over to BiPAP. So it makes it easier on patients. September 30th was our, sorry, September 16th was our fire training night. We had a house out in the Colony that we were training on. They're actually gonna be doing some training on it again this weekend. Actually, they're gonna finish up what they can with the training on it this weekend. Did some scenarios, entry, search and rescue, that type of stuff in their house. September 30th, we did a combination training, search and rescue for a downed hunter. We did that on DNR land with their approval. Same time we do anything on DNR land, it has to be approved by the DNR. They did not charge us for it. We just have to wait for after the hunters, because it is hunting season. We have to wait until they're out of the woods before we can start doing our training. They had a total of 35 EMS calls, two motor vehicle accidents, 10 fire calls, a total of 47 calls this in the month of September, bringing our total year to date to 406.
And how many of those 406 are EMS?
281, hopefully. 13 motor vehicle crashes.
I'm actually surprised that it's that low. Just during some of the other municipalities and normally during the Jefferson County, the EMS calls generally are much higher than fire.
And I also got an email, we got our ISO rating back. Larry, you should have got a copy of that email. Within the last week, our rating has stayed the same as it was five years ago, when we had our last fire.
I love seeing the posts.
Well, fire prevention's starting next week, so we do have a bunch of things lined up for the schools and that, during the day and that, so. Change your clocks, change your batteries, it's not that easy. Check the date on your detectors, make sure they're somewhat current, anything more than five, five years old, replace them. CO detectors and smoke detectors. Their life expectancy at the most is 10 years, so if they're getting close to that 10-year mark, please give them a handout.
If the public should need assistance with any of those duties?
They can call a fire station.
Call a fire station for assistance.
Non-emergency number.
Non-emergency. My batteries be there. Can't emergency. All right, thank you very much. Library Board, Sarah was not gonna be here. She gave the basic stuff, they were talking budgets and whatnot, so nothing, nothing urgent to report. Planning Commission was canceled, lack of agenda items. Water and light, Tim?
We had a difficult evening there. Tom Bergen, who had been with the utility since 2003, retired officially. That was his last meeting. Sorry to see him go.
How many years?
Since 2003.
Three, yeah.
21 years.
Yeah.
Long time. We approved the purchase of outage management services. It is software that is tied with the electrical meters, as I understand. Is that correct?
Right, now we have, we went to Open Point, and that will be a part of Open Point.
And the advantage to this is when we have an outage, it will identify every house that is out. When the linemen go in, you'll be able to look at a map and say, this one, this one, this one is. The public can go in and see the general area where the outage is.
Have you on your website or something?
Yep.
You can look it up on your, on your line meter account, if you have it in your personal, if you set it on your call.
If your power's out, hopefully you have it on your phone.
If you have it on your phone, I mean, but if you have your, your phone, and go to their website and just look at their website, it'll tell you the geographical area, that the, the number of customers that are out.
And that's available right now?
Not yet, no. It'll be about, what, a month?
Yeah, I just got approved now, so I'm not sure what the timeframe is.
What says ready and rolling, going on our website too?
It was, it was really interesting to see, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to the services. We went over disconnections throughout this year and discussed what the sewer connection fees for new connections will be effective January of 2026.
26, 25?
26.
I wrote 24 in here, so.
Well, that, that passed.
Was it?
It's not retroactive. Okay, we'll get to that.
That sewer rate increases different than the sewer connection fee.
Okay, sorry. I still have it wrong.
Yeah, it is. It should be 25.
So it's the connection fee that'll be?
Well, we have one now, but it'll be updated.
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 And it's based off the value of that new plant.
Sure.
And we can't do that until the plant is complete. That's why the 26th. But he wanted to get, Ben wanted to get it in front of us ahead of time, so that our board can understand it and go over it. And I believe it's based off of 20 years, was it?
Correct.
20 years.
Okay. You got it. That it?
That's it.
All right, Richard, Parks Commission?
Unfortunately, due to work commitments, full-time job commitments, I was unable to make it to the Parks Board.
Okay.
It seemed like there was not a lot, but...
Were they going through budget again?
Jenny, I can speed up.
Oh, beautiful, thank you.
Ah, yeah, we had, we had the Parks Commission meeting last night. We discussed budget for the 2025 operating expenses and stuff. We played around a little bit with up year projects with Pickle Ball Clark and updated Pavilion and three young homes and other stuff. We kind of moved that around, so made a different document coming with that.
Good.
And then we discussed upcoming next year's events. Fourth of July, went to summer concerts, later helped in that kind of stuff. So there'll be some more information following up in the next December meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Budget is a big one. Thank you. Public health and safety?
We discussed chickens, the chicken ordinance, and everything else comes later on in the council.
Okay, chicken ordinance, we recommended, you recommended it to go Planning Commission?
That's correct. Without recommendation.
Correct, thank you. Public Works?
We discussed the water tower, which is later in the agenda, and we got some updates on products that are ramping up for the year. And then announcements will have leak, backup starting or chip ring ending and those types of things.
Anything more on the roads, or are we doing that later?
Really wasn't on the agendas.
No, I, with project updates, I just wasn't sure if they were talking about any of that.
There'll have to be a few, there are departmental discussions, I think. And then we can bring it up maybe to the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, old business, seen none. New business, Resolution 2024-33, county library tax. I'm assuming this came from the budget, not necessarily directly from, like a prior meeting here.
We do this every year.
From the budget, yes.
We do this every year.
No, I know, I know. Yeah, that one I didn't get. Yeah, I know you didn't. Normally we see what this translates into, like normally our budget number is like 89 or 80,000. Why, is this just the equalized value? Now we have to do the math? Because we're, because usually this tells us by town key or by area, so that...
One whole sheet of paper?
There you go, the whole sheet of paper. That's weird that way. There we go. That makes more sense. All right, so this wasn't in the packet. So our budget number that by state statutes, everybody has a certain ratio that they have to give based on equalized value of population and all kinds of that stuff, is $77,712. And Tim, finance is recommending $208,000.
That's correct.
Correct. We always pay over, yeah. Okay. Just needed those numbers.
Charlie Cool, Washington, who has the Resolution 2024-33, library tax exemption.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Griffin to approve Resolution 2024-33 for $208,000 versus $77,712. And so we have all the numbers. Any questions? Hold up.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charlie's cool, yes.
Griffin, yes. Thomas, yes.
Wade, yes.
That's all, yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 2024-32, issuance of 2024, 2029 private wealth approval. The last one. The last one. The last one.[1756.26] Okay.
Wire will move to approve resolution 2024-32, issuance of 24 through 29, well, private wealth permits. Second.
Motion by Wade, second by Austin Cool to approve resolution 2024-32, all in favor?
Aye.
So, motion carried. And then we have gravity sewer service, which is an email.
Yes, it's what Everett had, he said to me before the CDA meeting, I think, we'll get it over, and so he asked me to include it in your package.
Okay. And just basically an FYI at this point, to let us know we're still looking at these things, there's a report coming, is there more, I mean, was this discussed?
He wasn't at our meeting, so we.
Okay.
This was to be, this was financed by the CDA.
Right.
To do a study on what requirements would be for the service area that's included in the map in the packet. Uh, we didn't have a formal presentation, so what you read in the packet is what information we have so far.
All right, well, I guess more to come on that then, so it's an FYI at this point. Uh, any questions? Okay. Recommendations boards, committees and commissions, water and light ports and pay. Now, Joey didn't give me the number this time, Barry, so I had to look it up, but I know what it is. 778,206, do this application. It was, um. Day eight, I'm sorry, line eight, the contractor's application for payment, 778,206.
Charles School will make a motion to authorize the ports and pay for 778,206. Austin Cool, second.
Motion by Charlie, second by Austin Cool to approve ports and pay. Voca.
Austin Cool, yes. Charles School, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes. Waterloo, yes.
I want.
Wade, yes.
Whole cities.
I was in my wrong city.
Waterloo, yes.
I needed that, Richard, thanks. No, I did hear if, if, if Jody approved.
Jody, were you in your town?
Yes.
Is that for the whole city too, or just?
Yeah, the whole city.
Motion carried. Uh, tracking project, that's all part of your package, is informational, with the pretty pictures that I love, and town and country update informational, is that?
Yep, it's in there. There's some pictures in there, back here.
Oh, that stuff, oh, okay, it's all part of the same pack, and, okay, all informational about it. All right, sewer rate increase, what's going?
Barry, you want to take that? You want me to? The sewer rate increase, that's.
Right here.
Yeah, I got it.
I think it might have been a part of that. Some of that could be that.
Yes, I can start off right, Tim, it doesn't have a packet, funny, but what, um, this is part of our, every two years, I believe, when we started the sewer project, this was one of the increases that we had scheduled, and by knowing what it would be, um, what they did is they took the volume charge and increased it, and then decreased the BOD charge down to zero. And when the BOD charge typically, we gave customers credit starting at up to 250 or 260 milligrams per liter, and that's where we started doing business, charging businesses. What they decided to do now is put it on the volume charge and start the businesses basically in residence as zero, so therefore the BOD rates and stuff decreased, but the volume charge increased. And you can see that up above where, um, on your, on your sheet, like that's what it did.
Barry, you want to tell them what BOD means?
By, I believe it's biodegradable oxygen, is that correct?
Oh, so we, okay, I was just, I thought.
Any other question?
I'm still confused, but that's okay, I'm, I'm, thank you.
Okay, so it's this document rate increase as of January 1?
Yep.
So.
This was a planned increase.
No, I understand, but what did you, can you explain that change one more time?
What, okay, what, um, when we rent, we did our rates.
Right.
We decided that, um, to increase the volume charge and put our BOD rate starting at zero instead of starting at 250 for the industrial customers. So with the BOD already in the volume charge now, for everybody starting at zero, that's why the volume charge went up, because it has a built-in BOD for up to 250 milliliters.
Biological oxygen demand.
There you go.
I go blue.
The red sign.
And she still doesn't know that.
Right.
Still confused, so that's all.
What would you anticipate the next increase, or the next? Next time you look at this, is two years from now? Correct?
No, we'll look at it a year from now.
Okay.
Once our, we have industrial, industrial customers coming off our system, so we're going to look at it a year from now. That doesn't mean there'll be an increase a year from now, we'll see how the year flows with the rates adjusted, and with adjustment, we'll look at them the following year.
Okay.
Do you have comparison to other communities? On all of this stuff?
Yes.
Can we get that?
Sure.
I fielded a lot of questions.
What's that?
I feel a lot of questions about utility rates.
Okay.
It seems like more so lately.
Okay.
So.
I think we should, yeah, it'd be nice to have something published. It'd be nice to have something that people can see, this is where everybody else is compared to Waterloo, knowing we're doing a new sewer plan, other people will be coming behind us in the near future.
And that's what our engineers stated, is we're going to go high, we're going to be quite a bit higher than everybody else, when Lake Mills and Jefferson gets done with theirs, they will leapfrog above us.
Right.
Marshall's, Marshall's a 10-year span opposite of us, and 10 years, Marshall will leapfrog above us. Marshall's been quite, I believe, quite a bit ahead of us in the past, because they built their new plant 10 years before we did, so you constantly have that leapfrog, so we can certainly give you charts on our rates, but you have to keep that in mind, it depends what cycle it's in.
I've heard on the electrical side as well.
What's that?
On the electrical side as well, I've heard complaints about the pricing.
Yep.
They pay, but you have to have it, I mean, there's no doubt that.
Right.
Infrastructure needs to be maintained.
Right, but I, but I, but I feel you guys should be educated on what our rates are.
Absolutely.
And I, and I think that's.
Because that would be, because I live two miles out in the country and I have We Energies, I pay 30% more than you do, so when we get, catch up to like 22% behind the other days, you feel like we're still doing well.
And those are comparisons I'd like to see.
And I think it's our comparisons, now, you can go to different communities from WPPI, and we, we kind of fall in the middle of them, because they're MEUs too, like us, where we're nonprofit, where We Energies is for profit. So when we compare to other small communities, not necessarily small communities, but small communities that are nonprofit, community owned, we're above the middle line of that.
Okay.
So, but it is important that, um, we try to get that information, especially to you guys and to other, our customers.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's something you disseminate, like in a monthly bill or something, as a comparison thing, but.
You used to.
I find, I find that most of the questions, I've been feeling like they have spent on the rates, and, and trying to.
Yeah, we try, we really do, we try, we try to get as much out as we can.
Yep.
And it's important that we continue, it's very important that city council numbers understand it too, because it's complicated, it's not just, they're higher than they're low.
Right.
It's important, the more that you guys know, you can help us get the word out there exactly where we fit.
I get it, I mean, if you've been to the grocery store, you've been to the fuel pump, I mean, what is the number? You know, the price of your trucks is up, wages are up, the price of your parts are up, I mean, tell me one thing that went down.
Right, well, we knew this was coming up. This was going to happen.
And we're, and we're trying to make up from 2022.
Last year.
That was a bad year for us, where we paid three times what we normally did for transformers. I can't, I gotta make that up somewhere.
But I think having the conversation in a public forum where people can listen to it and hear exactly some of the reasoning behind.
Well, and they have every opportunity to come to our names, and we, we really try to get people to come to those.
Yep.
It's kind of.
We try to get people to.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, right.
You know, yeah, but.
But no, you should bring it up, you should talk about it, it's good that it's on here, you know, and that helps us.
Yeah, so if we could get something, and, and over the years, because I'm a weirdo, I keep some old paperwork, and there's been stuff in those flyers that says, you know, here's kind of like the history of where we've been, and why it's changed, or comparison to other communities, it'd be nice to have something like that, that we can put out there as well, or direct them to your website.
And we do, we, we put, I think, seven or eight flyers a year in our bills, and you guys get them, you know, what.
Seven, I'm digital.
What's that?
I'm digital now, I just looked at my bill and that's it.
And unfortunately, we send flyers out, and that's what happens to the flyer.
Yeah.
I think you guys are doing a really great job, I think the substation improvements has increased the reliability in town.
Yes.
That I've seen in both my residential and my business that I work at, so it's made a big difference, so those improvements, of course, they cost money.
Yes, they do.
But it's better.
Yeah, so get us some, some comparisons and just some information, direct us where to look for it on your website, just so we can tell people the same thing, please. All right, any other questions?
We need a motion to approve the.
Sewer rate increase for 2025.
Thomas will make that motion.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Tom, second by Griffin to approve sewer rate increase for January 1, 2025. Any other questions? Voca.
Austin Cool, yes. Charles School, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wade, yes.
Haslam, yes.
Motion carried. All right, water tower, that's all it says, water tower. Water light, okay, of course you weren't in, oh, I don't know, who wants it?
I'll take it, that's fine. Um, the water tower on, it said Jackson, that's Jackson, right?
Squire.
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 Squire, okay. Near Jackson, is no longer in service, it's no longer being used, we're not, it's not part of the water network even, so it's been sitting there empty. Um, I think in June, it was brought to our attention, and we asked to have a study of the quality of it in Kansas State. Um, the utility is asking what our decision is with what we're going to do with that, do we want to knock it down? Do we want to keep it? But the utility doesn't want it, so they want to give it to us, the, the city to maintain and make a decision on whether it stays or not. Part of the discussions tonight were, if it costs $80,000 to take it down, what's it going to cost in 10 years? And how do we deal with that? And how do we deal with maintenance issues that are kind of ongoing with it? The other side of the coin is all the effort that was put in to get it painted and make it look nice, and, and my opinion still does look nice, but someone said, do we think with our wallets or with our hearts on making these decisions?
My question would be if it wasn't painted, would it be a question?
It wouldn't be a question if it wasn't painted.
If it was just an empty silver tower, it would go down, but because it's painted, we don't want to, and it's kind of an icon, and we had people in here, I don't know, a few months ago, just earlier this summer.
June.
Yeah, that were dead set of it, dead set against taking it down, so, and I'm not looking to have more tax money spent on something that isn't a functional thing, you know? I mean, I, I understand the connection, I personally like looking at it, I am used to looking at it, so it's a matter of what is it going to cost us to maintain?
I don't know that we understand the maintenance, um, physically, as far as the structure itself, I don't think there's much. Chad's probably got a half hour weekly, a couple times a week, depending on how the grass is growing, mowing and those things. There is a retaining wall there that maybe needs a railing or something, and.
It hasn't had a railing this whole time, why would we have to do it now?
No one's got it yet.
And school's closed too.
I know, I understand all that too, so just something to think about.
Is it maybe something we can table to find out, because I wasn't, um, isn't it part of like, with St. Joe's closing, or like any closing, that it could be somewhat in a development down in the future, that we would take care of it then?
Pardon me, sir?
I think, I think a better option would be to please both, let's tear it down, take the ball and put it over in Fireman's Park next to the Mary Go Round or something to that effect.
The painted portion of it?
Because then, those who want it, and it is an icon here, um, it could be just like the Mary.
Massive, we talked about that too, like that.
That potential land could go, if we do get a developer in that area, if they do decide to sell.
It might be a lot, that might be a lot, unless they tear the church down and they sell all of them, I don't.
Which Everett and I are in discussions with the Diocese to find out what they want to do, I mean, at a minimum, I would like to be able to build on that open space, which would also spread out the utilities and taxes and all that good stuff too, but that particular item, did the public works have a recommendation of what they wanted to do?
Discuss it here?
Oh, isn't that?
That was our recommendation.
No, it's a recommendation.
I don't think anybody in our group felt that we wanted to sway it either way, honestly.
I think that's where we all sit here too, I mean, we like the icon, but at the same time, nobody really wants to take care of it, and I get why the utility doesn't want it, because it's not a utility anymore.
It's not part of the utility, it's connected, so.
But just leaving it alone isn't an option, just leave that in books, you're not really paying anything for insurance, what's the difference, just leave it where it is? Why does it have to be transferred to the city?
I think the way Joey looked at it was, you're going to have some maintenance on it, you're going to have the mowing you have, I don't know that, how the PSC will look at us sticking money into something that's not part of our system.
But is it just mowing? I will volunteer Chad.
That's all you have.
You'll volunteer, yes, guys.
I mean, that's all, that's all you're really going to have is mowing on it, um, you may want to do something with that retaining wall, whether you bank it up or something on it, um, you're going to have about $200 in electric, if you fix the lights up on top, just put bulbs in them.
Yeah.
Right now, I don't know if they work or not, we can certainly send some. We can certainly, we can certainly take care of that, and I mean, I could send my guys up there to change the bulbs off, that's not a $50 item.
And if it, put it this way, if, if it's just mowing, which isn't that much, and if it's a lighting issue, that, you know, why can't we just, we build just like a regular street light? That the city pays for that, and then we just leave it alone?
That's what we're asking.
Yeah, the question, the question is right now, is our, as a city, we are going to take it over and maintain it as is, how is, and get it off his books, because we tabled it back in June.
Right, right.
And we have these questions, the question is, are we as a city going to take it off his books and maintain it?
And I'm suggesting we don't, but we can take care of whatever the cost is, if we're just mowing it and taking care of the light bulb. And, you know, because we are looking at trying to figure out what we can do in that area, if the Diocese is even going to remotely want to sell that property, or what they're going to do with the church, we don't know.
So, yeah, another question is, right now, they don't, because their money is tear it down, we accept it down the road, and we aren't going to be our nickel to tear it down, right?
Or we can share the cost.
And that's, and you guys have the ability to do that.
Yeah.
You guys, 20 years from now, decide this was your issue, this is whatever, I mean, you do have, I think you do have the ability to send a strong recommendation to the utility, I don't know how that works, but I think it's the idea, just for the books for now.
Would we be able to kind of leave it as is for right now, because of the unique situation with the church, and we don't know if there's going to be an opportunity and then go down it.
Later?
Next year, at this time, or something?
If that's your recommendation?
I don't, I don't know.
Well, and that's why, because from his standpoint, if that's all it is, is, is because you own it, but you don't want to have to put any cost to it, because you're not getting the revenue, which I would.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a place to put the cost. I can't put it to the water system.
Correct.
Because it's not a part of the water system, that's why the board looked at it, the commission looked at it as, you should do something with it. Either we tear it down, or the city can take it over.
But then how would you cover that cost?
You pay for it.
So maybe it's something as simple as, there's a contract, an agreement between us, that the city will take it over, but if it comes to the point where it's. there's a contract, an agreement between us, that the city will take it over, but if it comes to the point where it's dilapidating, it has to get torn down, that we would share in that cost in the future?
Sure.
That way, we're, we're still mowing it and paying the light bulb if we want to.
Correct.
And at the moment, I don't think anybody wants to tear it down. I mean, I get it, but at the same time, I don't really want to put tax dollars on something necessarily, just to
What's different? So if tax dollars or water light dollars? You're paying the both, you know?
I know, when somebody, it's gotta come from somewhere is the point. But if it's going to have to get removed, A, community was gonna want to be involved if they want to take up a budget or do some fundraising or something like that, that's fine too. But since neither one of us really have the means to take on more debt and have, you know, another expense, that, maybe that's just something we should look at is, is figuring out an agreement that between the city and the utility, if it has to get repaired or if it has to get taken down, we share in that cost in the future.
Correct.
Makes sense?
Put a giant chicken coop under it.
Put a giant chicken coop.
Is under the tower still have lead pipe? Never had lead pipe. Never? No. Okay. With the stuck dial iron.
Okay. So is this something we would like to have Bill draft something up, or do you have a different plan? I'm open to your suggestions. I'm an odd voter.
I think that sounds good. Um, I think it's the best of both worlds at this time.
Since we don't know for sure what's gonna happen in that area. And at the moment, through the study, it wasn't like anything was earth shattering. We had to do anything with it right now.
Still structurally sound enough to stand.
No, I don't, just my, my recommendation would, I don't think you need to go to Bill for interdepartmental
Okay, if you're fine with it?
I think you could certainly sign something up that this, make a resolution that the city's taking it over in anticipation that if there, it needs to come down, that it could share the cost with you guys. I think that's simple enough to work out.
I think that's easy enough to do and helps with our only
And I'm fine with that.
Groups.
Because you always have the ability later, the city council does to change that.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't think
I mean, if they decide twenty years from now it's gonna cost two hundred thousand dollars and they don't want the bill, I think the city council probably has the ability to shove at that. I don't know, I'm guessing, but it
We can operate it with the M O U and move up there.
Okay.
So I guess from the people's point of view, it's an icon. What happens when it needs to get painted again?
Correct.
Is that the teardown point? Or
Don't know.
Yeah, and that's something I want you guys
There was a donation that did it the first place, that the citizens went and paid for that, so that didn't come from a tax dollar or a utility expense.
Yeah, and that's the thing is, you know, as a taxpayer, I prefer not to put another hundred grand into somebody else's when we can probably please both tearing it down and moving it. Because as much as you said that it's intact now, that, the retaining wall is actually the biggest concern. And retaining his wall isn't a concern other than aesthetics, and at some point, something should be done with it. But I don't think you understand the size of that tower. Yeah, oh, I get it. Because you're not gonna just move it. It's gonna cost you twice as much to move it as it does to tear it down. And that's the issue is the cost.
And where would you put it? I mean, something that size in diameter, uh, the park would just be sort of
You don't think it's big until you go up there and you walk around it. I mean, it's sixty feet tall, just the dome. And it's in, just, just a, just the top to bottom is sixty feet.
The wrong part.
Now you put that on the ground, you're looking at a six-story building on the ground.
Like a farm, a farm silo.
It'd be in Waterloo, Epcot Center.
There you go.
That's a pleasure, people.
I'll make a motion to draft an agreement between the utility and the city to share costs and leave it in place currently.
Share the cost of
dismantling it
Okay, so we're gonna take over the maintenance of it?
I think so.
You're gonna take over the tower?
No, just the maintenance.
That doesn't, that doesn't do us any, but for the utility.
All right, I'll reframe it. The city will take over the tower and the maintenance and at the time of demolition, cost share between the city and the utility.
At the time of need for demolition or
At the time it's decided to demol it. When, you're not gonna know what that cause is. Is it because the paint faded or is it because the, the tower got weak? Or the ground got weak, or a developer wants it out of their way?
We'd be in charge of the, um they said they recommend five-year maintenance or five, five-year inspection?
We'd be in charge.
Okay.
So it would be us.
How much is the inspection?
Five.
Five, five grand.
Five thousand?
Well, we want first
Second will be easier probably.
Six thousand and then four percent inflation per year. But he said every five years.
But isn't that funny? Why would we have, I mean, it's not in use, there's no water, so there's no, nothing to it.
But there's holes and then they can lead to rust.
Okay.
Issues with it, so I, I don't know if you have to do it every five years, I'm just putting it out there so we can discuss.
How much, how much is it gonna cost us? Not, not taking into consideration the lighting of it and mowing.
What is it gonna cost?
The city, yes.
Um, do you need that, um, I think they have insured for a million dollars and that come off, I think she said sixteen hundred or seventeen hundred?
No, I, I don't know if it was for a million or what, I just know Lana said it was six to eight hundred. So I don't know what it was.
So if it's six to eight hundred, we reevaluated when I talked to Lana yesterday, I reevaluated, I said only put it for fifty thousand. And if it was a million dollars before and it's eight hundred, it, it's gonna be about forty bucks.
A year?
A year.
Who determines the value of it?
We do, utility.
Okay.
Because up until then, it was used.
Okay.
And somewhere along the line, when it came offline, it, the monetary value stayed on it.
They're paying that high.
So when I, whenever we went through it this year, I told Lana to knock it down like fifty thousand because there's no no value there.
On the insurance, is there coverage for like debris clean, like if something were to happen to it, like if there was a storm, like is there coverage?
That's what that covered.
Shouldn't something, should there be
What's that?
Like just a fifty thousand, no matter what happened to it, it's not just
That would be, that's what we have covered for.
Okay.
I mean, we can set that higher, but I don't know, that seemed like if something kind of bite him, knocks on the ground, that saved us.
What if it falls on the house or
Straight line winds didn't take it over and
That's the liability.
But that's not, that's not the insurance that's on it, I don't
That's not the asset, that's, that's the asset insurance, not the liability insurance.
Property, yeah. I don't think that's, I think the state has, I think the city has a separate
Yes, liability.
Liability?
Liability, yeah.
So we gotta look at that liability cost?
No, that's, the city has liability. It doesn't have liability for a single building.
Got it, that's correct. I, I don't know.
I believe so. I, that's, you can ask Gina, I don't know how that works, but I believe that's
So in, in the resolution or the memorandum of understanding, we can get kind of these details put into it a little bit more and bring it back to council? And see what it looks like?
We're just, just open the right memorandum, we're not passing the memorandum.
Correct.
And you don't have to get, well, I mean, you can get as specific as you want to, but the city always has the ability to change that.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to write the memorandum. We can get some more details put into that.
Austin Cool, second.
All right, memorandum here. All right, Wired, motion by Wired, second by Austin Cool to write a resolution and do the research on the costs, et cetera, with a sharing with the utility to be brought back to council when it is available, correct?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public health and safety, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four, no yield trail holding net season if we have
Trail goes in regardless. The trail, the proposed route has not changed. There is a map. permissions have been granted from the property owners. We'll mark it the same way we did last year, with addition of some barricades at the driveway off by Portland and McCabe, or McCabe's property.
What you done in the past?
Yeah.
Same old, same old, all right. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve that.
What's happened then?
Motion by Wired, second by Thomas. He said, that he said it?
Yep.
Motion by Wired, second by Thomas to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion carried. Events spooktacular twenty-six. Is this one, he said he had like thirty winters for it?
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
That's crazy. I had forty-eight last year.
Did you?
What'd you say?
I had forty-eight for last year.
Nice, good, it's great to see.
All right, who's got it?
I'll take it. It's a request from the Waterloo Business Association, special effect application for October twenty-second, or twenty-sixth, excuse me, from nine AM to four PM. It's for the spooktacular event, which is going to involve vendors, they writes downtown to Trick or Treat. And he's asking for no parking on the south side of East and West Madison Street between the bridges. And on both sides of North Monroe Streets from City Hall to the cul-de-sac on South Monroe Street, including the cul-de-sac. For no parking and that's for the vendors.
Okay.
I'm gonna scream out of public safety with a recommendation to approve, so I'll make a motion to approve the event application for the spooktacular event.
Wired, second.
Motion by Council, second by Wired to approve the spooktacular event for October twenty-sixth. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion carried. And when is Trick or Treat? Is it that Sunday?
October twenty-seventh from twenty-five. That's Sunday.
You got it. All right, next one, events beer, wine and cheese crawl.
This is a new event from the Waterloo Business Association. It's the same as their annual wine walk. And they just want to handle, just that they're including cheese this time. Uh, this would be November sixteenth, which is a Saturday, from ten AM to three PM. And they are, don't require any thing other than the event permits. So Thomas makes motion to approve the special event application for the Waterloo Business Association from November sixteenth for the beer, wine and cheese crawl.
Griffin, second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Griffin to approve the beer, wine and cheese crawl. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Future due to items in the motions, anybody got anything? I will be bringing a recommendation at the next meeting for the replacement for Tom Bergen. That will go into effect November first for that next meeting. We have a couple of applications, which was very nice to see, and was kind of a hard decision, but it's good, good that people stepped up and followed it. So I'll have that in the next meeting. Anybody else?
Cool, next motion, you carry.
The Cool's having motion to adjourn, first of all, they've been off. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion carried, everyone will leave the hall.